MNN in partnership with League of Women Voters of the City of New York presents Race to Represent: Multimedia Coverage of Manhattan Elections, Council District 5 Debate.
The League of Women Voters of the City of New York and Manhattan Neighborhood Network are pleased to bring you a debate among the candidates running in the 5th Democratic Primary on September 10 in Council District 5. The winner of the primary will be the Democratic nominee for the seat in November's election. I'm Alice Bloom and I'll be your moderator today for the League of Women Voters. All the candidates will be running in the new council districts that were drawn by the New York City Redistricting Commission following the results of the 2010 Census. Each district represents approximately 168,000 residents. The candidates are seated in the order of their closing statements. We have many League-prepared questions for them. We'll allow one and a half-minute response to the first question and a one-minute answer to the remaining questions with the intent of covering lots of issues. I have some discretion to allow rebuttals, but I remind the candidates that they will all have a one-minute closing statement to address any issues they like. Let me begin by introducing the candidates. To my left, Mr. Ben Kalos; seated in the center, Ed Hartzog; and to my right, Micah Kelner. Thank you all for being here. Are we ready to start?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's start with the first question. And I'm going to address that in the same order as our closing, so it's going to go to you, Mr. Kelner, first. Mr. Kalos, I'm sorry. Affordable housing is rare in Manhattan. What can the city council do to preserve and expand the number of affordable housing units? And then we're going to proceed to the right. Mr. Kalos.
First, Alice, thank you to the League of Women Voters of New York City and Manhattan Neighborhood Network for putting on this fantastic debate series. I am really hoping that you, the voters, learn a lot from tonight's debate and are able to make an informed decision this primary day. As Chief of Staff to Assemblymember Jonathan Bingham, who is on the Housing Committee, he was also the Chair of the Mitchell Lama Subcommittee. And that's an affordable housing program, and that's one of the areas we're focused on. It's really hard to find affordable housing in New York City. If you can find an affordable apartment, there's applications, there's waiting lists, there's lotteries, and even getting past that is almost impossible. What we can do is put our affordable housing online with a central database so that everyone can just get online, apply, and we can have the waiting lists online so they're transparent so that nobody can skip the lines. If I'm doing my job right, all of us can afford to live here.
Thank you. Mr. Hartzog.
Thank you, Alice. And I would also like to thank you and the Manhattan Neighborhood Network, along with the League of Women Voters of New York City, for inviting me and Ben and Micah here this afternoon to talk with you and the voters. As to the issue of affordable housing, it's an acute issue here in the city. And with respect to the 5th Council District in our community, I think one of the tools that we have, especially in our district, is the use of the 421A program in terms of setting aside 20% of buildings when developers come into the community to set aside for affordable housing. There might be ways in terms of incentivizing developers to build more affordable housing, but I certainly think that we need to be looking at making sure that the rent control, the rent stabilization laws are in place and that when we are upgrading the building stock, the housing stock, that we are not forgetting that there are many folks in our community, among seniors and young families, whether on fixed incomes or not necessarily in the proverbial top 1%, who live in our community, amongst our community, and that they need to be thought of with respect to what we are doing as we develop and making sure that affordable housing that is in our community stays there and is not being lost, which is one of the issues, of course, we're facing on Roosevelt Island. But I think that's what we can be doing to start with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartzog. Mr. Kelner.
Alice, thank you for having us. I really appreciate MNN and the League of Women Voters holding this debate. You know, for people of a younger generation, the only affordable housing out there is having roommates. The fact is, the vast majority of middle-class New Yorkers in Yorkville are living in rent-stabilized or rent-controlled housing. One of the things I've done as an Assemblymember over the last six years is I've had a free legal clinic. I've organized lawyers to provide services, particularly to senior citizens who are being threatened by unscrupulous landlords. The second is Mitchell Lama. The Mitchell Lama program was only designed to last for 30 years. We are now coming to the end of that. The question is, what is the Mitchell Lama for the next generation? And what we've done on Roosevelt Island is work to make sure that there are affordable buyouts. We are now having a co-op and condo conversion of two buildings that will not only allow the current residents to buy their apartments at an affordable rate, but will create a second generation of affordability so that no one can flip their apartment, make a huge profit, and make it unaffordable so that the next generation afterward can remain affordable. These are the things we need to do. We need to work with developers to make sure when they want to build a large building that they're setting aside more than 20% of the apartments. There needs to be a community give-back in that way. These are things that are incredibly important. We can't have middle-class New Yorkers priced out of their homes, and that's what's going on right now. You have unscrupulous landlords using every technique possible to try to raise people's rents, and when people aren't informed and they don't know their rights, this is what happens.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, second question. We're going to mix this up a little bit. Mr. Hartzog, we're going to start with you and proceed then to Mr. Kalos, and then Mr. Kelner will have the last word again, but I'll make sure we change that again. All right. Currently, the law would allow the city's wastewater treatment plants to accept waste from hydro fracking operations elsewhere. Such waste is toxic and hazardous and poses grave threats to our water supplies. As several New York counties have fracking waste legislation protecting their water supplies, would you introduce and support legislation giving New York City that same protection? Mr. Hartzog.
Well, Alice, the idea of fracking, I am opposed to hydro fracking for the very reason you're talking about in this question with respect to the wastewater and the mix that they use in order to do the fracking. That is the nub of the issue, I think, with respect to water and fracking, with respect to New York City especially, because we are one of the largest, if not the largest municipality in the country to be drinking unfiltered water. So I think guarding our waterways and our water here in New York City is of primary importance for the community. In terms of accepting this mix that petroleum and energy companies refuse to divulge in terms of ingredients, I think until we begin to understand what's in this mix, that we should prohibit taking any kind of residual waste that comes from it into anything close to New York City and our waterways. We already have enough problems as it is with respect to cleaning up the East River and the Hudson River. We don't need to be introducing more toxic water into our waterways.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kalos.
New York City has the best water in the world. I'm an avid drinker of tap water. I love it. It tastes delicious, and it's incredibly amazing to have that as a resource. If we allow hydro fracking, we will be in a situation where people are going to have to have bottled water or filtered water, and that's just not sustainable. It's a lot of recycling we'd have to do over and above what we already do in addition to having to have all the waste from the filtering. We've actually had anti-hydro fracking events in my campaign. We hosted a screening of Gasland Part II, and we had over 50 people in our office, in our campaign office, and are organizing them to fight hydro fracking. So the first thing we actually need to do is defeat hydro fracking. If somehow we're not able to do that, New York City should not be in a position where we are treating wastewater that has no business being created. We need to stop hydro fracking now for the cleanest water in the world.
Thank you. Mr. Kelner.
New York City is the only municipality in the nation with a federal waiver so that we can have unfiltered drinking water. The idea that we would allow hydro fracking or hydro fracking wastewater anywhere near our aquifers in upstate, or we would take this treatment water, is we're endangering that permit. We would have to spend billions upon billions of dollars in building new treatment plants. We already saw up in the Bronx that that water treatment plant went way over budget to the cost of over $1 billion more than we thought it was going to cost. This is not just an environmental issue, this is an economic issue. Water is the basis for all life. Civilization ends without water. I have sponsored every moratorium and ban on hydro fracking. I've sponsored legislation to make sure that all of the chemicals are disclosed and what their mixture is. The fact is, if this were safe, the oil companies would let us know exactly what they're doing. They wouldn't claim state secrets on this. The fact is, this gas has been in our ground for millions of years. It's not going anywhere. If we wait and we find a smart way, a clean and healthy way to take it out of the ground, that'd be one thing. But right now, there are just too many dangers and too many unknowns to allow hydro fracking.
Okay, it looks like we have unity on this issue, for sure. Okay, next question. We have so many good questions, and I'm glad we're moving along. Mr. Kelner, I'm going to start with you here, since you had the last word twice. We're going to give you the first word, and we'll proceed to your right. Now, this is a question I know that you've been waiting for. Do you support the zoning change to increase the size, height, and bulk of commercial buildings in midtown?
You know, I don't. I think when everybody opposes something, whether they're developers, community preservationists, all in unison, sometimes for different reasons, say that this is a bad idea, I think we're rushing into something. This mayor is looking for his vanity projects, his legacies, so he's trying to push through everything possible at the last minute. Everyone has raised different objections to this plan. We need to slow it down. We need to reevaluate it. We shouldn't be rushing things through with less than six months left in an administration. This should really be up to the next mayor and the next city council.
Thank you. Mr. Hartzog.
Thank you. I agree. I think that the issue of zoning is of preeminent importance and land use, especially in this particular council district. In fact, in my campaign, we've been talking about the fact that it is too few people making too many decisions behind closed doors about development and zoning in our particular council district that's negatively impacting our quality of life. And whether it's more noise, pollution, construction, congestion, traffic, scaffolding, if you will, is having a negative effect. And I think with respect to the midtown East rezoning plan itself, one of the biggest problems is that it seems to put the cart before the horse, that the mayor, in his zeal to, again, have these legacy projects as he leaves, has forgotten that we need to have the infrastructure in place before we start moving up in the skyline and bringing more people to an area that's already congested. And again, this is the kind of thing that's affecting our particular council district acutely, so I am opposed to it and think that we need to be thinking much more.
Quickly, give me an example of the infrastructure you mean.
Well, I think with respect to, you're going to be midtown East rezoning, so we're talking about the subway in Grand Central. Do we have enough room on the platforms? Anybody who has been down on the platforms around rush hour knows how crowded Grand Central can be. So we need to think long-term, and it's what I've been saying on the campaign trail now for eight months, is we need to be taking a more macro view, if you will, for a council district, but for the island of Manhattan and the City of New York in terms of how are we putting these projects online, how are we bringing them online, how are they being thought through and their impacts among the various neighborhoods in our community?
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Kalos.
The midtown rezoning is actually going to be affecting our district, and it's getting a little bit crowded, but that's fine, there's always room for more. What we need to do is make sure we have responsible development, and what that means is that developers support local infrastructure. So when no one else would, none of the elected officials, no one else would testify about new development in the district, our campaign's actually been leading the way. And we've been saying to developers who are building new schools, new hybrid buildings, new, all sorts of things, we've been saying to them, you have to support local infrastructure. You can't just come here, build something, and not support the roads that you're using, the sanitation that you're using, transportation infrastructure. And when no one else had the courage to stand up, we did, and we won, and we got a lot of concessions for the community, and that's what the Upper East Side needs in its next council member.
Thank you. Okay, next question. We're going to start again with you, Mr. Kalos, and then we're going to go to you, Mr. Kelner, and then Mr. Hartzog, okay? I'm trying to be fair. The Democratic candidates for mayor have proposed modifying mayoral control of the schools. What changes, if any, would you like to see? And do you have a position on putting charter schools in the same buildings with traditional public schools?
Education in our city is getting worse instead of better. Our district is horribly overcrowded, and I actually graduated from a public school in the city. I went to the Bronx High School of Science, and I want to do anything I can to preserve that legacy so that New York City continues to have the best education in the world. Bronx Science has produced more Nobel laureates than practically anywhere else. So we need to take mayoral control, change it, give parents a voice, give students a voice, give teachers a voice, give administrators a voice, and open up that process. And in terms of co-location, we need to make sure that the laws are actually being applied so that if a school is in the same location as a public school, that any upgrades for the charter school are also benefiting our public school students who are sharing that space. After that, we need to figure out how to move forward as a city with better education plans because the current model isn't working.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kelner.
I don't support the co-location of charter schools with public schools, and I've openly opposed it in my own neighborhood. You know, we have the best elementary schools and the best middle schools anywhere in the city. We know what works on the Upper East Side. The fact has been, the Bloomberg administration left us for many years overcrowded. When I came into office six years ago, every one of my elementary schools was at 150% of capacity or greater. I've opened three new elementary schools in the neighborhood in six years, and I actually used mayoral control to do that. I leveraged my vote and the fact that when Chancellor Klein was coming to us because he was seeking votes on mayoral control, I said, "I need a new elementary school." You have not been good on this issue. When Chancellor Walcott announced that they wanted to put a charter school inside an elementary school building in our neighborhood, we kept pointing out to him, "We don't need a charter middle school. What we need is a good, new, public middle school." Charter schools literally come and study our public schools. We know what works, and we need to just replicate them. And I'm very proud that back in March, the chancellor reversed himself, and we did not get a charter school at PS 158. We got a new middle school that is going to be quite good, that's going to open in September of 2014.
Very briefly, though, as to the issue of mayoral control, do you think that needs to be changed?
I think it definitely needs to be changed. I think a major issue is, remember, this bill wasn't mayoral control of schools, it was school governance reform.
Okay.
I think the mayor should have a majority of appointees on the board, but those should be fixed terms, so once he makes those appointments, those people can do what they think is in their best judgment. They don't have to fear reprisal from the mayor. They shouldn't have to fear being tossed off the board if they don't do exactly what the mayor says.
Thank you. Mr. Hartzog.
Yeah, Alice, you know, education, being a member of the Youth and Education Committee on the community board, I can tell you that this issue of mayoral control and charter schools is constantly in the forefront every month when we're having our meetings. Indeed, with respect to PS 158, at one of our recent meetings, what we heard was that there was, due to circumstances beyond their control with respect to rehabilitating a building, a charter school was actually co-located for a short period of time in PS 158. And what we heard is what I think all of us, parents, children, know, is that co-locating charter schools and public schools, the children know there's something inequitable about it, there's something different. And so I think that co-location, for me, we shouldn't be doing that. With respect to mayoral control, I think the idea is not bad considering where we were, but what we need and what we're going to have in 2014 is we're going to have a new mayor, and I think a mayor that's different with respect to outlook than the previous two mayors, which were very dogmatic in their personality, if you will. And I think we need to have a better conversation as to how we find that spot, that middle spot between mayoral control and the input of parents and teachers and students, which are of utmost importance, especially in our community. But the one issue with respect to mayoral control and co-location that you were touching on with this question, that I find, I haven't gotten a satisfactory answer for, is the fact that we are in a community education council district. That is enormous. It runs from almost the southern part of Harlem all the way down through our council district across to Chelsea and down into Chinatown. And so there are middle schools that some parents on the Upper East Side find that their children might be going to, and I think that...
Okay, you know, I'm going to ask you to perhaps hold that, it's a very interesting issue, but maybe in your closing statement you'll address some of that complexity.
Sure.
Okay, but you do feel a new mayor is going to have a different imprint on the relationship?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hartzog, we're going to start with you with the next question, and then proceed to Mr. Kelner and then Mr. Kalos. The city council receives approximately $50 million in discretionary and member item funding for 51 districts. What is your position on how this funding is allocated and who determines how the money should be used?
Well, let's put it and keep it in perspective, $50 million out of a budget of over $71 billion. I have always wondered with respect to member items in general why they're not part of the ordinary budgetary process, because too often it seems in our political system, these member items, whether at the state level or the city level, seem to be the root of some problems. But with respect to that, one issue and one thing that I found interesting is the idea of community-based budgeting for some of these things. But I would like to implement that, but before we could implement that in this particular council district, what I'd like to do for that is to get more access and more information out to the community, because that is one of the things that's sorely missing that I find every month on the community board, is that people are unaware of what's going on. So before I introduce community-based budgeting for that member item pool of money that I'd have available if I were the council member, I would like to make sure that the community actually knows what's going on. So I think that would be the first thing that I would address with respect to that, and then let's see if we could implement the community-based budgeting as an idea for that money.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Kelner.
I believe in member items. I believe they work. Sometimes when you have a mayor who has a big picture of a $71 billion budget, they're not going to see the small groups, they're not going to see the PTAs, the park associations that are doing amazing work, and that's the job of the council member. But the member items should not be a weapon that the Speaker of the City Council or the mayor uses to reward their friends and punish their enemies. Everyone should get an equal base amount of member item funding, and it should be transparent. I actually introduced legislation at the state level, the Public Corruption Prevention and Enforcement Act, that would make strict regulations on member items at the state level, making sure that all the organizations were 501(c)(3)'s, that they were in good tax status, and that no member of someone's family or staffer's family could be on the board or could be connected to the organization to make sure that there was not even the perception of self-dealing.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Kalos.
Member items are millions of dollars in discretionary funds that council members have to provide to nonprofits in the community that are providing essential services like programs for kids after school, or even meals for seniors or the homeless. Unfortunately, politicians have corrupted the process and have used it as their own personal piggy bank, allotting it to their friends and taking it away from their foes. We are the, I've led the city pushing for something called participatory budgeting, which is now happening in multiple council districts throughout the city. We put out an op-ed in the Gotham Gazette calling for it, and what would allow is for the community to actually have a role in voting and how to spend their money. So instead of showing up once every four years to vote in a primary, they'd vote every year on how to spend millions of their tax dollars so it could serve their community.
Thank you. Very interesting. Okay, on the next question, we'll start with Mr. Kelner and proceed to Mr. Kalos and Mr. Hartzog. Whoever wins the primary election for city council in this district will be representing approximately 168,000 residents. Do you know what your future constituents want you to work on first?
Yeah, I do. It's because I've already been working on it with them. You know, they want better schools, and we've begun to bring that to them with three new elementary schools and a new middle school. They want better parks. We've created two new parks on Roosevelt Island, the South Point Park and the FDR Memorial. We're now working to upgrade the Esplanade as well, as well as Andrew Haskell Park down in the East 60s. They want to know that the health of their community and the safety of their community is going to be protected, and that's why I've been leading the fight against the East 91st Street Marine Transfer Station that the mayor is so intent on getting built before he leaves office. I have brought three lawsuits. We're currently in federal court, and these are the things my community wants. They want affordable housing. They want to know their homes are going to be protected so that not only they can continue to live here, but their children can continue to live here.
Thank you. Mr. Kalos.
The great thing about a primary is that we get to actually talk to the voters, and where they may have previously been ignored, now their voices can be heard. One of the number-one issues in the district is the Marine Transfer Station. It's been on track with construction to be built for years now, and it's still on track. The construction is currently happening, and it's been a failure of leadership. The other big issue is the Second Avenue subway construction. While I was Chief of Staff with Assemblymember Jonathan Bingham, I had the privilege of working with him on a grants bill to keep businesses open and support the residents so that they could be safer there. The biggest other issue is, of course, education. Our schools are overcrowded, and we actually have new solutions. We can't build our way out of this crisis with not having enough seats. We've proposed an idea, pop-up schools, where we could actually get immediate seats now so that all of our kids could get the education they need today.
Okay. Mr. Hartzog.
Sure. I think the most, I think the issue, really, that everything runs off of in this particular election with the 5th Council District is quality of life. As I said before, it's too few people making too many bad decisions affecting our community in terms of development, and that's leading to a bad quality of life for us, whether it's the Marine Transfer Station at the north end of the district, it's the Second Avenue subway construction, it's what's happening on York Avenue as we continue to build without doing anything on the infrastructure or mitigating the impacts of these constructions, or what we're not doing on Roosevelt Island with respect to insisting that it be 100% barging for those folks out there. It's about quality of life, and everything stems from that, whether it's developing with respect to affordable housing or calculating the number of new seats that we're going to need in schools as we build. It is about that, it is making decisions that are thinking about the entire district together as one, and that, I think, is the primary thing that people are thinking about right now in this district. I hear it every day on the street and at the community board.
Okay, well, we're trying to squeeze so much in, you have so much to say. It's time for closing statements. We're going to start with Mr. Kalos, one minute each.
My name is Benjamin Kalos. I'm a candidate for city council on the Upper East Side. I grew up here with my grandparents and my mother, who still lives in the district. Our community deserves to have somebody from the neighborhood actually represent it. You need somebody who can fight corruption when they see it in Albany and put all the legislators' voting records online so that we can hold them accountable. I'm going to bring that same transparency with me into City Hall so that voters actually have a say in how $70 billion gets spent. New York City is the greatest city in the world, and it deserves representatives who honor how amazing our city is. Join our campaign, as many already have, to build a better city.
Thank you. Mr. Hartzog.
Thank you, Alice. I think what the voters are looking for, when I think about this, is we're looking for a representative and we're looking for an advocate, someone who represents our interests and who can advocate for them on the city council. And I have been doing just that on the community board for you for these past few years. As I alluded to earlier, it's too few people making too many bad decisions behind closed doors that are leading to overdevelopment in our community. It's negatively impacting our quality of life, as all of you can see every day, with the scaffolding on every corner, with traffic, noise, congestion everywhere. It's not a coincidence that we are last in the city with respect to opening green space, and that's by a long shot. What I propose to you, folks out there, is that I will be your advocate and your representative as I have been on the community board. I would be honored to have your vote, and don't take it from me, please. Ask the folks in the community. Ask the folks at 440 on East 62nd Street what I did when they were being entombed by someone who wanted to build close to them. Ask the folks at Rupert Housing. Ask the folks at the Marine Transfer Station up in the '90s. Ask the folks in reasonable development in the mid-'70s what I've been doing for them and I'd like to do for the 5th Council District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzog. Mr. Kelner.
Well, Alice, again, I just want to thank you, the League of Women Voters and MNN for hosting this great debate. It's been a terrific time here. You know, I have been someone who's been actually working for this community for the last six years. I am the candidate with a record of real results. I've made a difference when it's mattered most, whether it's bringing four new schools to the neighborhood, leading the fight on the waste transfer station, or writing laws important to the entire state. When a little girl was devastated on York Avenue by a reckless driver, and the law only allowed that man to get a ticket, I wrote a law on that little girl's name to make sure that reckless and dangerous drivers who injure pedestrians are punished for that and they lose their license. When unscrupulous insurance companies wanted to raise the rates of people with very expensive prescription drugs, I passed the first-in-the-nation law to preemptively prohibit that and make sure that they only had to pay their normal prescription drug rates. I have fought for this community time and time again. I have fought for this community time and time again, and I've succeeded for this community. I look forward to serving this community in the future, and I love it very much, and I'm going to live here forever. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all candidates for participating in today's debate and for your willingness to put yourselves forward for public service. For more information about voting, registering to vote, the candidates, or your poll site, please contact the League of Women Voters at www.lwvnyc.org or call the office, 212-725-3541. This important voter information is also available at votefor11.org. Please remember that only registered voters enrolled in the political party having a primary election may vote on September 10. All registered voters, regardless of the party, may vote in the general election on November 7. I'm Alice Bloom. For the League of Women Voters of New York City, thank you. Thank you to MNN, Manhattan Neighborhood Network, and thank you at home for watching.